Yep, we're ready?
(noise)
The meeting is called to order for the regular city council meeting, May 19th, 2016. Madam Clerk, the pledge, please.
Councilman Baudier is absent. Councilman Benton?
Present.
Councilman Hewitt?
Present.
And Councilman Wheeler?
Present.
Mayor Missalee is absent. And Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Johnston?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Special presentations.
I want to say congratulations to the girls, and will one of the coaches please come up to the podium and present the awards.
It's a 2015 Girls' Bounceball East Bank Champs.
(inaudible)
You got that button.[69.11][69.11](applause)
Hello. Thank you for having us here tonight. I want to introduce my coaches that helped with me. My name is Julie Connect, and I'm the coach of the 2015 Undefeated Bounceball East Bank Champs. And this is my -- you can't hear us?
(inaudible).
It's on.
And this is my daughter, Michelle Connect, who helped me also, and Kristy Perry also helped us in this season. So I'd like to call the girls up, one by one, and give them their certificates.
Pardon me?
Sure. Will Mikael Lusko come up?[111.31][111.31](applause) Gabby Perry?[126.61][126.61](applause) Okay, without y'all line up, please? Thank you. Seriously. Can the team come line up along the wall here?
(inaudible).
Destiny Linton?[142.01][142.01](applause) All the bounceball people come and line up on the wall, please. Madison Calamary?[153.56][153.56](applause) Is Madison? They were supposed to be. Ash B. Tuzet?[174.56][174.56](applause) Ramsey Aron?[181.01][181.01](applause) Thank you, good job. Demi Catalano? Is she here? No, Demi's not here. Ava Lusko?[202.81][202.81](applause) And Kaylee Rocha?[207.51][207.51](applause) Okay. I'd like Kaylee to stay up for a second. Kaylee also gets a separate certificate. She has won three consecutive East Bank titles: 2015 basketball, bounceball, and softball.[222.34][222.34](applause) Thank you so much.[226.26][226.26](applause)
Congratulations, ladies and coaches and family. Madam Clerk, do you mind amending the row call and adding my presence, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Missalee arrived 7:38.
Here.
Yeah, Chief Walker, can I finish while we're at it?
You want to push back? Okay.[254.12][254.12](inaudible)
Madam Clerk, where are we in?
Special presentations. Number two, 2016 Girls' Biddy Basketball East Bank Champions.[266.63][266.63](applause)
First one's going to be Nadalyn Vonavillian.[276.52][276.52](applause) Olivia Bourgeois.[284.83][284.83](applause) Katie DeLaat.[299.41][299.41](applause) Matty Branch.[319.31][319.31](applause) Mikael Lusko.[325.02][325.02](applause) Gabby Perry.[337.25][337.25](applause) And Ashley Tuzet.[350.56][350.56](applause) We do have four other special awards. Three years in a row, they've won bounceball, softball, and biddy basketball, which is Destiny Linton.[364.13][364.13](applause) Three years in a row, consecutive East Bank titles, bounceball, softball, basketball, is Lauren Sekinger.[373.84][373.84](applause) And then for four consecutive East Bank titles, for biddy basketball, bounceball, softball, and that's it. Four years in a row, Gabby Perry.[386.53][386.53](applause) And last one is also four consecutive East Bank titles, for biddy basketball, bounceball, and softball, and that is Mikael Lusko.[396.84][396.84](applause) Thank you.
I think it should be noted that a special thank you should go to all our parents, our coaches, our playground, the community of Harahan in general, for the support of these young ladies to help them achieve their goals. It's a wonderful, wonderful display of what we do here in Harahan, so thank you. I'd like to make a few comments. Please pardon me for my late arrival. I was at my son's award ceremony for his senior year at Jesuit High School. While I was there, I was informed that the city of Harahan potentially has five or more valedictorians from our city that go throughout the schools in the area. When I get those names, I'd be happy to announce it to our citizens. That's a lot to be proud of. I'd like to thank Father McGinn for holding true to himself in form. He sped through that ceremony so that I was able to get in the car, and I'm here, and I will be meeting up with my family to celebrate. At that award ceremony, and if I have this wrong, I'll have to correct it at another time, three Harahan young gentlemen were honored. Kenneth Crzan had multiple honors, three very specialized academic honors. Chris Abity had a special academic honor, I believe, as well. And my son, Matthew, I'm very proud of this. I am a radiation oncology nurse for years. In that profession, you come to respect physicist. And the physicist I know would appreciate me saying that it is the center of all math and sciences. There may be some who might disagree. My son was awarded tonight the Frank T. Howard Excellence in Physics Award for Jesuit High School. And it was a very prestigious award. So our little city has some very bright young men and women, and please pardon that I ran late. We will now move to address the council.
Correct. Saint Rudy's School? What? Saint Rudy's School, number three?
Oh, I thought I was --
Is on the agenda, but I don't --
They didn't show.
We're not doing the Saint Rudy's School presentation tonight. Okay, thank you. So we are going to move to address the council. Before, I just want to make sure that everyone knows, when you come and address the council, please come and state your name and your address. Come to the podium to your right. You have a three-minute time limit. I will put on the timer. Please refrain from any inflammatory comments. Also, no questions or comments will be entertained from the seated audience. If you would like any answers to any specific questions with the council or myself, we are more than happy to schedule an appointment. Address the council.
Okay, John Ream, Three Grand Pass. The -- we have a sand report that we had done, an analysis on the sand, and it's an 11-page sand analysis, the sand coming from the Wood Company sand pits. And in the sand, it contains some heavy metals: arsenic, beryllium, cadmium, chromium, copper, iron, lead, nickel, and zinc. Wood Materials dredges the sand from the bottom of the river, and the sand comes down the river, is washed down the river. Whatever was dumped into the river comes into that sand and is pumped up, dredged up from the bottom of the river. Besides the heavy metals, the sand contains silica, which it is silica, and OSHA has a final rule to protect workers from exposure to respirable crystalline silica. Workers are exposed eight hours a day. The residents, including our children, are continually exposed to the silica, which comes over the levee when the wind's blowing from the south, anywhere from the south, and is blown into our community, and is re-blown up again when we do our daily chores and the vehicles are running on the roads. On May 14th, I witnessed, also, the Harahan Police Department made a report on barge unloading in the city of Harahan, which is a violation of our ordinance, 1333. It doesn't allow for barge unloading. This limestone being unloaded, transported from Harahan to the Jefferson Parish side. But the Harahan has -- Harahan Police Department made a report for it. The -- also, we addressed the fire alarm getting ready to go off. The wood materials were served with a notice of deficiency from the DEQ on February the 4th, 2016, and it was for things that had happened in the last part of last year, is in October, November last year. And part of the things that he said that he was going to do to get out of the notice of deficiency, to supplement what he was supposed to be doing, was to connect some berms up, and he sent a picture into the DEQ. And what he was, going to close this up, the berm between Pitch 3 and 4, and to close that up to satisfy this, what they were supposed to be serving them as, too much sand coming over the river into the residence area. The levee that he has, he has a berm set up right here, where the blue area is right there. He was supposed to close in these two areas here, and he did close in this area. And he never did close these areas in. But the DEQ let him out on the violation, or with the, whatever he was served with. That's three minutes already? But he did reopen --
And I forgot to start it promptly, too, so he actually got extra --
I thought it was getting interesting.[836.23][836.23](laughing)
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's all right, can I -- Let me help you? Hold something? Okay. I got it. I'm sorry, let me get organized in a minute here. Hi, my name's Evelyn Ream, I live at Three Grand Pass. Wood Company stated additional measurements the company would take to satisfy the NOD letter, which Johnny was just talking about. And this was his letter here. This was the letter that he wrote to the DEQ, and he had the NOD letter. Okay, it had actions that he was taking, and it had additional measures he was taking. So in those additional measures, he did say that he would close up the openings right there, which shortly after he was released, he broke the berm open. So that was very disheartening to the community. We have one here that these are, this is dated May 9th. This is a very long truck right here with sand in it that does not have the cover. When the thing is in the front, there's no cover. The thing's in the back, it's a cover. So they were lined up in the morning on May 9th to come into this pit right here. Okay, what I also like to show you is, this is the one that he stated in this letter, that he would close this and plant trees. What he did was, he broke it open again, and as you can see, this truck is being loaded, we're standing over the levee, okay? This truck is being loaded with sand right here. These are very deep into the pit. So anything that's like this, it's open to the public. This is what we're very concerned about, as Johnny was saying, what was in, the metals that are in the sand, and the particulates that are in the sand. So we're very, kind of really frustrated about this, because when he made that, you know, statement that he was going to do that, that gave us a little bit of hope for the residents. And then it was broke open. Okay, so then we also have here, oh, we have a letter, an email from, someone from the Corps of Engineers, and he states, "I am confident that if Wood Materials Representatives were to propose an alternate alignment or path of the haul road, we will work with them to find something we could approve. However, that relocation would come fully at Wood's expense with no reimbursement. At this point, Wood Materials has never submitted a plan or a request approval to relocate the haul road." Now, he has to request it, for them to approve it, but they said they will work with him. So that needs to be done, also. Also, we have right here, this is, Mayor, you already got this already. This is residents who have signed the request. We also did put a request in to Mr. Bures, as Mr. Bures did ask for it, and thank you, Mr. Bures. And so we have a lot of people who are being affected by this. Also, I would like to say, if you have any problems, to contact the DEQ. Thank you for the paper that you have here for people to contact, okay? So the DEQ, if you can contact key DEQ for sand blowing into the community, you can also send pictures. Trucks uncovered and sand on the road. Contact the police department. If you have speeding, you witnessed speeding, passing stop signs on the ramp in residential streets, and any action that's at nighttime, that is vibrating in your home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll just --
Thank you.
How you doing? George Acker, I have several businesses in Harahan, I have a residence at 57 Colonial Club Drive as well. I'm just following up with them. These people had stopped by a city block of warehouses I own on River Road, and I have an extreme dirt problem. Now, my property falls within the Jefferson Parish side of this pit, but it has gotten so increasingly worse. I mean, we're spending upwards of $20,000 a year just maintaining the property at the minimum from the sand. So I got pictures that were taken today. We pressure washed, cleaned our property Friday. It already looks like, you know, a major disaster. We just spent well over $100,000 renovating the whole facade of the building. All the paint, everything is just full of sand, no clean finish. The inside of my tenants' facilities, and I personally run my businesses out of this warehouse, we actually mopped, pressure washed, and cleaned everything Friday. Inside, we cleaned yesterday, and I have pictures that were taken today, an hour ago, that it's just ridiculous with dirt. I mean, I don't know if a lot of people can see, but this picture was taken probably two hours ago, within the last two hours. The sand on the pit, that is, you know, in scale, almost 10 feet higher than the top of the levee. So I don't know if they have transferred from problems from Harahan to the Jefferson Parish side, but it's like a windstorm in any given day. The wind, the sand just blowing, I mean, you open your mouth, you got a mouthful of sand. And if you look at my property, this was all pressure washed by about 20 guys on Friday. And you can clearly see all the sand. And when, and the worst part is, when it rains, the sand that's on River Road carries down and floods my property, and we are talking, and we're talking, I'm not talking a half inch, I'm talking three, four inches of sand. And you can't sweep it up. I got to get Bobcat, and I got to get sweepers and pressure washers to clean it. It's not an easy task. It's also causing some other problems, because all of my subpumps and all of my loading docks are clogged up and drained. It's becoming a plumbing issue, sewage backup issue. But I mean, you can look at the photos. None of the cars, I run a very high-end, like, auto salon there, that we do high-end, extreme stuff. And this is the inside of the warehouse. I have epoxy floors that is exactly the same as an airplane hangar. It's a four-coat epoxy. The dirt was so bad with the concrete, I did the epoxy. But as you can see, this is settlement in two days on the ramp, on one ramp. The inside, the sand blowing into the warehouses and everywhere, I mean, it's a good eighth of an inch thick, just in the first 20 feet of the doors, just getting through the wind cracks. So, you know, I'm not out to hurt a business, but I can tell you, I knew it was a problem when we bought it, because when I bought the property, they said, we asked why they had this kind of maintenance, didn't realize it was as bad. But within the last year, it's gotten really bad. So if I can help in any way, you know, I brought these pictures, and I would love my property to be clean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're getting back to you.
All right. Yeah.
Rhonda Bagby. What I'd like to know is exactly what are the citizens of Harahan? What should we expect from the council? We're paying your salary. I'd like to know exactly what you're doing, except causing chaos. This is unacceptable, and making spectacles of yourselves. And Dana, are you a psychiatrist? I take that as a no.
No, ma'am, I'm not answering you.
Okay. Well then, the only thing that I know you are is a nurse, and a nurse cannot diagnose anybody.
Fred Clots, 41 Oak Avenue. Again, I'm here about the sand issue.
Pick the microphone.
It gets, the sand issue, it gets --
You're tall.
Yes. It causes a problem at our property. We've got sand everywhere. In fact, I just changed my air conditioning filter. I change it every month, like, I go to three weeks, because it gets in the house, and I've never seen air conditioning filters get clogged like this so quickly. I've run businesses, I've run concrete companies, that were surrounded by residents. We could not let any sand leave our property in the street. We couldn't let dust blow off DEQ. If one resident called, I would have to write reports. This seems very, very unusual, that this company is able to do this without any oversight. I know Plaquemines Parish can't do it. You sure can't do it in Orleans Parish, because every time we had problems in both those parishes, we got cited by the city, we got cited by the state. And every other company of this kind around here, that I know the people that run them all have the same issue. So it's very unusual, this has been able to go on this long. And it seems unusual, we're talking about it this amount of time. And that's basically all I got to say.
Thank you.
Kay Mitchell, 41 Oak Avenue. Mr. Woods, I'm going to talk to you, because I'm a person. I'm a hairdresser, I talk to people. And I just want to give you an idea of what your business takes from my life, okay? First thing you take is a quality in my life, okay? I work hard, I do a lot of volunteering. You know that, I do a lot of volunteering. And you take the quality in my life. I help rehabilitate shelter dogs. We cannot keep up with fleas and flies. I've never had this, ever had this problem, ever, ever. So you take the comfort from my shelter dogs. You take my privacy, because guess what? At 7:00, the radios come through my television. At first, I thought we had ghosts in the walls. And it's got, it comes through my television. It's crazy. Okay? We know when it's 7:00. It's taken away my happiness. Everybody deserves to be happy. You live in Mid-City, I have a business in Mid-City, okay? I go work in Mid-City, but I come home to Harahan. Why don't you buy a house in Harahan, right by your business, and experience what we're going through? We have some beautiful houses here, and you take a lot from Harahan. So why don't you come live here and be a part of Harahan? Also, it would have been nice to see the lady hawks run out of here with wood materials on the back of their jerseys. You got to give back more. Give us respect, give us consideration. Everybody deserves that. You have that in Mid-City, we're going to have it here in Harahan, because we're not leaving. We're not giving up. This is it.[1503.41][1503.41](applause)
My name is Lee Adams, and I live at 2029 Generous. I have a couple of issues that are completely unrelated to the major problem on the Bachelor. The first one involves the crime problem on Hickory with the apartments. A couple of months ago, about maybe six weeks ago, plus or minus a week, I sent the council and the mayor a copy of Kenner's ordinance regarding what they're doing with the landlords and, for their apartment complexes, and putting some of the onus on them, to hold them responsible for the crime that occurs on their properties. We really would like that ordinance passed, or at least some version of it that's real close to it, because we think that that ordinance would allow code enforcement and the chief to really come down on the problematic tenants in that, in those complexes. The second issue is, I'd like for the council and the mayor to work with the parish to eliminate that stoplight at Sauvay and Hickory that's getting ready to get turned on on Monday. It's a $250,000, $300,000 light that has no use and has no value to that intersection. I called the parish to find out the reason for the light. They said there was lawsuits filed against the parish. I'm asking them to provide proof of that. The lady on the phone did tell me that the light will only turn red when there is traffic coming from the dead end, which I actually find hard to believe. The problem is, is that the Generous will be used as more of a bypass with that light in play than it is now. There's a lot of young kids on that street, and there'll be blood on the hands of a lot of people if they don't solve the traffic problem on Generous. Whether it's a speeding, or everyone trying to get in or out of River Ridge, it's a major concern for us on Generous. And I ask that the chief of police try to increase patrols, take more radar between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, bike patrols. I have a nice chest full of water for you guys. But anything you guys can do to help Generous, sometimes we feel we're sort of left out, we're the sort of the panhandle of Harahan, and ask if we get a little bit more attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1642.25][1642.25](applause)
Hi, I'm Sarah Woodham. I represent Wood Materials Sand Pits. And I would like to say that commercial activity on the Mississippi River is not new. The Port of New Orleans supplies grain, United States grain, to feed the world. We supply energy to countries that cannot produce their own. The Mississippi River sand has been the foundation for homes and schools and churches and shopping malls to stabilize our swampy region for the last 100 years. Right now, it's providing stability to build a new runway for our airport. In December 2015, we began what we thought were good faith measures and discussions to address the residents' concerns about our business operations, something we've always tried to do in our 35 years of operating our facility. But we have truly seen in the past weeks that our efforts have gone unnoticed and are not deemed sufficient to some of you. Our limitations due to pump-to-the-river project have not been understood or appreciated. In the spirit of being good neighbors, and at the last meeting, I told you we would consider moving the haul road and closing the gaps between our berms. And in keeping to our word, we have done exactly that. Here are some of the steps we have taken to further advance the possibility of moving the haul road. As previously mentioned, we met in person with the Corps of Engineers back in February to discuss the Corps' requirement to relocate the road. After that meeting, we had an engineer analyze the requirements and scope of work. We have now engaged and met with a reputable engineering firm to perform all the engineering analyses and design the plans that will be required to submit a Corps of Engineer application. This includes taking cross-sections from the top of the levee to the middle of the river, soil billings all over our site. We've engaged an environmental consultant that will review and advise us along the way of best management practices in connection with the redesign of our entire 130 acres. We ask that you all, please understand this process will take time. And I'd like to add that this process is voluntary. We do not have to do this. We are -- We are in compliance with our permits, we follow the regulations, and we are doing this out of goodwill to the neighborhood. We ask you remain patient while we undergo the cumbersome, costly, and time-consuming process of reconfiguring our 130 acres on the Mississippi River. The permitting process might take months. And then if approved, we'll need to reconfigure the entire site as a result of the renewed new location of the road. In the meantime, we'll look for other remedial measures that we can take, including maybe asphalting.
May I have a motion to extend time for Ms. Ham? I have a motion by Councilman Benton. Seconded by Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Please continue.
We're considering asphalting the road in the meantime, if the permitting process takes too long. If you're patient and work with us and not against us, we could direct more of our time and energy and resources to resolving the concerns in a positive manner. I ask that you quit throwing darts that we continuously have to duck. It's distracting, and it is making it hard for us to move forward to accomplish what you want us to accomplish. For example, calling the police on us last week to say that we're dumping into the river, really? Because when the police got there, they discovered that we were simply unloading a barge of limestone, which we are permitted to do. Now, this took three hours. This is just one of many examples of the times we have to stop what we're doing and respond to darts, daily darts thrown at us time and time again by harassers. Please be patient, work with us and not against us. We want to help. We want to help reconfigure our facility, move the road, make everyone happy. It is a voluntary measure. Please help us help you. Thank you.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. Sarah Woodham, in a letter dated October 24, 2001, to the Corps requested, where she requested the transfer of a permit from GW Contractors to Wood Children stated, "We agree to abide by all terms and conditions previously set forth." Okay, one of the terms of the permit is that the permittee shall, will refuse to load any sand haul trucks that do not have and use a serviceable tarpaulin that covers the entire load. That letter was from the Corps to Wood Marine Services dated September 5, 1984. The same condition was in a letter from the Corps to GW Contractors dated February 25, 1997. Same condition repeated in a letter from Corps to Wood Children LLC dated April 2, 2002, approving the consolidation of three existing permits into one sand dredging permit. We also have a requirement that operator must remove sand that falls from trucks onto public roads. The requirement from the Corps was that the permittee will remove accumulations of sand that fall from sand trucks off River Road by the access ramps to the sand pits. This was in a letter to Wood Marine Services dated September 5, 1984. Same condition in a letter dated February 25, 1997. Same condition repeated in a letter from the Corps to Wood Children LLC in a letter dated April 2, 2002. These things aren't happening. Trucks move on the haul road without covers. The truck should not go out of park until a cover is fully in, in that load, over that load, and the cover should not come off until that truck is in park again. Also, we want to be good neighbors, but we seem to ignore our neighbors when we want to. Applications to the coastal management zone and to the Corps denied that there was any residential property that abutted. In fact, Harahan Wood abuts 28 residences along Riverside Drive. And I and my 27 neighbors mow the lawn of Harahan Wood, where their grass extends on the other side of Riverside Drive, their property, and we mow it every week. And we fight sand every day.
We will now close address the council. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I wanted to recognize that you are here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members. Just want to give you a quick update on session.
Want to tell everyone who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kirk Talbot, State Representative, District 78, Harahan, parts of Metairie, River Ridge. We're about three weeks to the end of session. Session ends June 6. We are about to take up the budget this week. I guess the biggest issue so far that I've seen really has been the budget and TOPPS. Just to give you a quick little update, when the budget left the House Committee last week, TOPPS was fully funded. There was an amendment to strip about a third of the money out of the TOPPS that unfortunately passed last week. I did vote for that. But, you know, it still has to go through the Senate Committee and through the Senate floor, and I, I feel confident that, that I, along with, with many others, will do everything we can to fully fund TOPPS. I think it's something that's very important and that, that definitely needs to happen. And I think the money's there to do that. So we will be working diligently to make sure that happens. Session will end June 6. The governor has talked about maybe calling in a special session that actually may start at midnight on June 6 to address revenue issues. You know, that's, we don't really know what the, what the table of contents for that is. I know a lot of it is reducing the federal itemized tax deductions on your taxes and raising revenues in, in various other ways. So we'll, we'll address those and, and see how that pans out. Capital outlay, you know, is something that very tight this year. We're doing a lot of capital outlay reform, just because of the past decades have been a terrible practice of how we prioritize money. I'll fight as hard as I can to make sure, you know, Harahan gets its due. But, you know, it is, it is a very tight year, and, and money is very tight, but, you know, we'll do the best we can. If there's any questions, I'd be, be happy to answer them. And if I could come back a month from now when session's over, I can kind of give you a little laundry list of kind of like some legislative highlights on, on what transpired.
We would love to have you back, and I don't want to put you on the spot. If I knew you were coming, I probably would have prepped you with some questions, and maybe if you come back next month if you need some time.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
But of concern were the increases on some taxes that affect the municipalities. And it greatly affects municipalities such as ours to put an additional burden on some of, with some of these additional taxes that are passed through, through the engineer, the company that runs, for one example, the wastewater treatment plant. These are a very, it's a very large additional financial strain to our community. I didn't know if you had any thoughts or any concerns, or if you would like to think about that.
I mean, my, personally, my thoughts are that, that we don't have a, a revenue problem, that we have a spending problem. There's others in Baton Rouge that, that think otherwise, and that they think that we can raise taxes to get out of this problem. That is not something that a lot of us, especially in Jefferson Parish, believe in. And we will be doing everything we can to make sure that waste and corruption and mismanagement and inefficiencies are taken care of in this massive 30 or $28 billion budget before we raise any taxes. And that's where frankly, the governor and, and a lot of us have kind of butted heads on. And, you know, it's easy just to pass an unfunded mandate down to a municipality where, you know, you're kind of left holding the bag, and you have to spend money that you could be using to fix your streets and your drainage and all the problems that really affect people's daily lives. And I think it's a, it's a terrible practice to do when, you know, we need to be looking internally on what we can do. And, you know, we are, and to the governor's credit, he's working extremely hard. You know, his, his car is there when we get there, and it's there when we leave. So we'll do the best we can to find common ground and to, and to work it out.
I just think I wanted to speak on behalf of Harahan, how difficult it is, and I always fear there's no such thing as a temporary tax.
That's true. Now, some of the taxes, I voted against, but that, that were raised, the sales tax, for example, statutorily, they will end in a year. So, you, right, there's been examples of temporary taxes that lasted 25, 26 years. They were quote unquote temporary. These taxes do end at that time. So they will have to have a new bill filed and a new vote in the House instead to pass. And we took some criticism on, you know, why we didn't extend those and, and that we're, we're just kind of kicking the can down the road. We're putting the governor on notice that this is a temporary fix, this money's not going to be here. So we better figure out what our revenue issue is and our spending issue is, instead of just writing a blank check in perpetuity where money just keeps coming in, because, you know, this thing's a, it's a monster, this budget, this, this state. And, and it's a, I think sometimes the only way to streamline government is to start, which I, you know, it's kind of brutal, but, you know, it, that's, that's just the kind of the way it is. I'll give you a quick example. When DHH, you know, we voted down some taxes that didn't pass, and at the end of the session, you know, DHH was going to have to take a $40 million hit, and dialysis machines were going to be unplugged and all that, within a week, they found $40 million in, in inefficiencies and bam, that was gone. So that, that just tells me that we really need to look at the spending side and not necessarily just start raising revenue to get ourselves out of this, out of this problem. And, you know, oil is a problem. Oil's going up a little bit, so, so that will help. I mean, I'm not going to tell you that the economy's great and that things are, are doing well. They're not. But that doesn't mean we, we need to raise revenue necessarily.
And I think Harahan is a shining example of what you can do with very little by tightening your belt.
Absolutely.
And making sure that the operations are streamlined.
Well, you can't print money, and, and nor can we.
That's right.
Only the feds can do that, and we don't want to follow their example.
So thank you. We would love to have an update next month.
Absolutely, if anybody has any questions.
And if you would like, if you'd contact the office, we'll put you under special presentation so you'd have some more time to address.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, can I ask you a quick question? When, when people come to address the council, and I'm being sincere, how do you make the determination if someone gets longer than three minutes? How do you make that decision?
It's a council decision on...
Well, you requested it tonight. I'm just trying to understand how you make that determination, how some citizens can have longer than others. I'm being sincere, I'm just trying to figure out how you come to that conclusion.
I believe that it was started when you personally were upset when the time was limited for a citizen.
You requested it this evening. I'm asking why you made that determination. This isn't about me, I'm asking you.
This is one person speaking at a time, Ms. Hewitt. One person speaking at a time. When that came up, when a private citizen came up and had much to say...
I need three, I just need three.
That you were dismayed, that it was made clear that a motion could have been made to extend time. So when a motion is made for the extension of time, that council, the council can either grant it by request with a vote or not. So it is at the discretion...
You requested it this evening. Two people got cut off because they, they were over their three. Somebody got to speak longer. I'm asking you, how does the mayor make the determination to request the council to extend it? That's the question.
I don't, I think that anyone can request the motion to be extended. And Ms. Hewitt, this is not to be argumentative at all. Did we address, close address the council?
No.
We didn't.
Okay, thank you very much. Go on. I lost track.
Okay. My name's Bernard Dupree. I live in the 100 block of Eldy Street. And if you want to see just how bad the sand, the dust and the sand is, last night, I had to travel the River Road at 11:45, last night and Monday night, and I ran into the same problem both nights. Excuse me. Coming, going, going to Eldy Street and hitting the River Road, you turn left, I had to go towards Auctioner. When I turned left, you can only see, you can only see about 100 yards. It's like a fog. And everybody over there, everybody on Eldy Street, everything you, everything you own is covered in dust, everything. But anyhow, this gentleman was up here just not talking about the tops on the trucks. I was going towards the U.P. Long Bridge, a dump trail, a big truck. It's not a tandem, it's a dump trail. It was coming off the ramp. He, he got on the River Road, and I know for a fact he didn't have a top. There's so much dust, you couldn't, I couldn't see, I couldn't see the back of the truck. I went Hickory Street, Jefferson Highway, and went my way. That happened two nights, Monday and last night, at almost identical same time, 11:45. So you have the dust problem day and night, it's around the clock. It all, it all filters all into people's neighborhoods. It, it's on your cars, and so you can't even light a barbecue pit on a Sunday. That's, that's, that's pitiful. You know, you, you guys need to, y'all need to try to do something, you know, with, with the sand deal. Water, these people, these people are wetting the road, they're doing what they can with that, but everybody knows water, water is, is what's going to, is calm the dust problem. Why they can't wet the sand back there? All the sand's all over the road back there, the trucks roll over it. They grind it up like talcum powder, and it blows everywhere. You need water everywhere, you need to wet it. That's the only thing I can see. But thank you.
We will now close address the council. Approval of the minutes.
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on April 21st.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes.
Reading of the minutes, approval of the minutes of the council meeting on April 21st.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes.
Reading of the minutes of the special meeting on May 4th.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on May 4th.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes.
Communications. The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in April. In reading of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board on May 4th.
I'd like to make a clarification at this time. I think Mr. Bures had made some comments about recently, about approving minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board. City Attorney Bures, do you mind speaking to that?
Um, my question, I think I, I sent it to all of the councilmen. I'm not really sure why you all are approving the minutes of some other agency. I mean, you weren't there to hear what happened at the Planning and Zoning Board, so I, maybe this is just the custom in Harahan, but it's really unnecessary. It's, it's that board that approves its own minutes, so...
Do we, do we have to accept them in any kind of way, since it's a board for the city, or...
Not that I know of. They, they report to you the action they've taken on the ordinances that come before them, and, and they send you communications as to what they've done. But as far as their minutes go, that's, that's for that board to approve. So you might want to consider that for the future. I don't think it really needs to be on the, on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Do you recommend that we withdraw this from the agenda tonight?
Well, that's in your custom and practice. So go ahead and...
Okay, all right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero, one absent. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board on May 4th.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda, to add the proposed ordinance. It will be in order. Madam Clerk, the title of the ordinance is, do you mind reading it?
Oh, sure. Do we have to have a motion, or just...
We'll keep it in order. I just want to get the mo, make sure that we, we get approval to put it on.
The following, you want me to just read the title?
Yes.
The, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Issuance of Public Improvement Refunding Bonds, Series 2016 of the City of Harahan, State of Louisiana, Prescribing the Form, Terms, and Conditions of Such Bonds and Providing for the Payment Thereof and Providing for Other Matters in Connection Therewith."
And...
Proposed ordinance number 2016-7.
And Madam Clerk, have you provided copies to the council and...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to...
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by, we might as well keep the rhythm going. Councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes. We'll amend the agenda and put that under the second item for proposed ordinances. Resolutions?
Proposed Resolution Number 2016-4. The following resolution was proposed by Councilman... Would you all like to do this unanimous?
Unanimously.
Unanimously.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Harahan, adopting the 2015 Louisiana
Compliance Questionnaire.
Would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? Being that there's no one from the public who would like to speak to the resolution, it is now open for council discussion.
I just have one question on it. The very last page, signature page, I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but next to Mayor Pro Tem, Sue signed on the last page.
We can reprint it.
Right.
We can amend that.
Right.
Can, we can have a motion to amend the language of where the Pro Tem signature is? Yes?
Why would only Sue Benton have signed it?
Right. That's no...
She was here for executive session. So, Madam Clerk was in the room, saw her, and said, "If you want to sign it now, you may."
And I've never seen this before. Could you just give me a little background on this?
Mr. Donahue?
Donahoe.
I do that to you every time. I am so sorry.
He has a T-shirt.
I don't know how to say it.
Do you want to go on my side?
Well, actually, can you just borrow the...
He just borrowed his microphone.
Yeah, it was fine, man.
Good evening. My name is James Donahoe. I work for Linda Hightlulu as her senior accountant. She extends her apologies for not being able to attend the meeting this evening, and she has prepared a statement for me to read to you all. The Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire is a document prepared by the legislative auditor and is a required part of any governmental external audit. Upon completion, it is required to be signed by the mayor and the council members. It must be presented to and adopted by the council by means of a formal resolution at an open meeting. Postal weight provided the questionnaire to Linda. She met with the mayor and various department heads to assist in answering the questions that were applicable to the sitting and marked not applicable to those that were not. She has informed Postal Weight that the questionnaire is for you at this meeting, and they are expecting to receive a copy and a resolution when they return.
So, is it, this is a customary document?
Yes, ma'am. According to Postal Weight, they have provided this in the past, but unfortunately, they were unable to provide proof of this fact, either of the signed or unsigned versions of, you know, these for previous years.
Okay. Thank you. Any other further discussion? No? Do you want to make a motion to correct the signature page to reflect the correct Mayor Pro Tem?
That's fine. I mean, I don't know if it's going to affect anything. That's what I'm saying, being that it's...
I'm just suggesting.
I mean, right.
For accuracy.
Well, what do you think? If it's not signed by the right person, should we change it?
I think we can just make a motion to identify the correct Mayor Pro Tem and alter the document.
Yeah, seems fair.
Would you like to make that motion?
Sure. I'll make that motion to...
You want to say, I don't want to speak for you, Councilman.
I'm going to make the motion to amend the signature for Mayor Pro Tem.
To state that it's Councilman Craig Johnston?
Correct.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Wheeler this time. I think she beat you to the punch. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes. The document is amended. We can actually give the document to the city attorney if he would like to... Do you want to see this?
The original.
The original.
What, I'll do the scratch the name, put my name, or any white out?
No, no white out.
Line through it.
We'll say nine two.
Thank you. Simple error. Thank you for picking that up. Any other discussion on this form? We can now proceed with the vote. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Resolution passes. And if we could pass the document for signatures? And we'll have to get Councilman Baudier's signature. Madam Clerk, do you mind contacting him at some point to get him in to, so that we can meet our deadline? Oh, thank you. Give it to Madam Clerk then. Ordinances for approval?
proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman Hewitt. An ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance 1333, Section 15, relative to zoning classification, NU Non-Urban Bachelor District, Harahan Municipal Code 1990, Appendix A, by amending subsection B thereof relative to permitted uses by adding thereto a new subsection governing the hours of operation of commercial enterprises therein and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
City Attorney Bures, I just have a procedural question. I know there was discussion because the Planning and Zoning Board deferred this by two months of waiting their recommendation. And Councilman Wheeler had stated that potentially this shouldn't be voted on until we get that recommendation.
Yeah. Technically, this isn't before the council right now. It's still at the Planning and Zoning Board. So, my suggestion to Councilman Benton, since she's the author, was simply to defer it until the August meeting, because Planning and Zoning is going to take this up at its July meeting.
Okay. So, do we, we can do that motion before we, we don't have to do, address the council with it, okay?
Yeah, to defer it until the August meeting.
Make a motion to defer till August.
The August regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, do you have the date of that August meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. The, I have a motion to defer to the August regular city council...
August 18.
Thank you.
Thank you, which is August 18th. Do I... Do I have a second?
I think Dana...
I have a second by Councilman Hewitt. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes to defer.
Mr. Bures, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
We, I wasn't at Planning and Zoning. We had that special council meeting before.
Right.
Did, did the members articulate why they wanted to put it off for two months and not, not look at it in June?
The, there was a lot of discussion during the meeting. The Woods representative showed up, the, you know, the citizens showed up, and the general sense, and I've read their minutes, you just approved the minutes of that meeting, the general sense was it was going to take that long to at least come to some, some sort of resolution to see if there was a compromise. It was at that meeting that I first heard that Woods was going to propose this, this new berm that would act as sort of a breakwater for the wind, coming through one of the breaks. And then, as I said, just last Friday, I heard that they were going to propose moving the Hall Road. And Planning and Zoning, I don't think has even heard of that. So, at their next meeting, or in the July meeting, I would expect that they would see something a bit more fleshed out, maybe some deadlines as to when all of this is supposed to happen. It also takes some input from the citizens as to whether, you know, this is an acceptable resolution of what's transpiring out there. So, that was, that was the upshot of the, the concerns expressed by the Planning and Zoning Board members, and that's why I think they pushed it off for a couple of months.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you make sure that the Planning and Zoning Committee Board gets a copy of the minutes from this meeting so that they understand what's transpired here? Thank you very much. Proposed Ordinance Number 2016-5.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Baudier and seconded by Councilman...
Second. Councilman Hewitt.
Hewitt. Proposed Ordinance Number 2016-5. An ordinance approving the re-subdivision of 651 Hickory Avenue, lots 13 and 14, Square P, Harahan City Subdivision, City of Harahan, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, made by Mandel Edwards Surveying Incorporated, dated November 17, 2015.
The public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to speak to this proposed ordinance, please come up, state your name and address. If there's no one with, if, oh, I'm...
Is this to be able to...
This is to address the re-subdivision.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay. Being that there's no one else from the public, we will now close, address the, address the council. Council discussion on the proposed ordinance?
No discussion.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
If there's no further discussion, we can proceed with the vote. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Ordinance passes. Ordinances for introduction?
Proposed Ordinance Number 2016-6. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman... Who would like to take this one?
Um...
Amending 2015 budget.
What is this for?
Amending the 2015 budget.
And why are we doing that?
We can, um, would you like to get it introduced, and then we can have Mr. Donahoe speak to it? I thought, I thought, I did say, Ho, Ho. Thank you. Ms. Benton, do you want to introduce? Uh, it's introduced by Councilman Benton.
An ordinance amending ordinance 1806, the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2015, for the City of Harahan, Louisiana.
Mr. Jimmy Donahoe, would you like to please comment about this, this proposed ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. Linda left me another statement to read. As, as discussed at previous council meetings, the auditors began allocating insurance expenses from the General Fund's non-departmental section to the police, fire, highways and streets, and recreation departments. The method used by Postal Weight for this allocation was based upon a percentage calculated upon the expenses each department had as compared to total expenses of these departments. In closing out the books for 2015, in preparation of the audit, Linda looked at the actual insurance policies that were paid for and then coded out. These policies are easily identifiable as to which department they belong to. For example, insurance for the fire trucks, sports accident insurance for the recreation department, and police vehicle insurance. Lastly, the commercial property insurance, which is charged to the city based upon square footage. We use the same square footage as the policy to allocate the total insurance paid to the proper departments. Linda promised you better accounting in this example of that. We no longer have an allocated based upon, I'm sorry, an allocation based upon a percentage of estimated expenditures for some departments. We now have the actual expenses for all departments based on the policies. The seven departments are the General Fund Non-Departmental, Fire, Police, Recreation, Maintenance, Court, and the Senior Center. That was some of the background regarding how the insurance expenses for each department were determined. The amendment for you tonight is to fix a budgeting error. Last year, despite the auditor stating that the department should show their portion of the insurance expense, the budget still showed the entire expense, almost $225,000, under non-departmental. The problem comes up at the end of the year. Those seven departments show an overage in expenditures in the insurance expense line item, because there was no budget put in place for those departments. Conversely, non-departmental shows an underpayment in this line item. Chief Tim brought this to our attention, and he is correct. It's not fair to be showing an overage when there was no budget allocated to those departments. The insurance, insurance budget amount was $224,499,000. Actual insurance costs were 200, excuse me, $227,476. The budget amendment shows 181,000 worth of insurance costs being passed to the proper departments. We urge the council to pass this amendment to ensure the final audit report will be able to accurately show how each department did for the year. Thank you.
Last week, they said I was $100,000 over because of insurance. This is showing 30,000.
There was a issue with how, when the program was set up originally, they didn't code the insurance expense as an expense. They coded it as a liability, so a beginning balance and ending balance carried forward throughout the years. That's incorrect, and it has been corrected and coded since then.
So, not $100,000?
No, sir.
Thank goodness, huh?
No, sir.
All right. Feel a little better now, bro. You're responsible.
Where did you go and spend it all?
So, this amendment came with the suggestion of Postal Weight, not a bill?
They suggested last year that this is how it was supposed to be, and if we don't amend it tonight, fix it this way, during their audit, they're going to...
We'd amend it next month.
Correct. By the close of their audit, it is, we want it.
We have to deal with it.
So, we want it before they write their final audit report?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
We need a sponsor for this, and we need a sponsor for the...
Supposed, any further questions? Proposed Ordinance Number 2016-7.
The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman, this is for refunding the bond.
This is, I thought we amended the agenda for this.
Unanimously?
Correct. It's a, right.
To add it.
Unanimous, you guys want to do this?
Is that unanimous?
Yep.
Yeah.
Sure.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of blank dollars of public improvement refunding bonds, series 2016, of the City of Harahan, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, terms, and conditions of such bonds and providing for the payment thereof and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add one other ordinance for first reading. What's the...
I have a copy of it for everyone here. You have the copy in front of you?
I'm going to read it.
It's an ordinance relating to admission standards for particulate matter. I think everyone's received a copy of it.
Everybody's seen this, yes.
Yes.
Got a second? Thanks.
Yeah.
Can, before, we can do this, but I just want to make sure that we go back. I want to ask Mr. Jimmy a question about the proposal, okay, of that prior ordinance. I have a motion by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, to amend the agenda to add an ordinance by title of, Madam Clerk?
2016-8.
Yeah, I guess so. You have them?
An ordinance amending the Harahan Municipal Code by adding a new article to Chapter 30 relating to admission standards for particulate matter, making findings and containing other provisions relating to the foregoing subject and providing for severability.
I have a motion by Councilman Hewitt, seconded by Councilman Wheeler, to amend the agenda for stated ordinance. All in favor?
Yea.
It's for first reading. Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes. Agenda is amended to add the ordinance for first reading, and it will be 2016...
Proposed Ordinance Number 2016-8.
Thank you. To go back to the prior proposed ordinance for first reading, Mr. Jimmy, if you would... To go back to the prior proposed ordinance for first reading, Mr. Jimmy, if you would speak to the necessity of this ordinance as well for the bond, did you have anything to say? It's Mr. Don... It was actually through Mr. Martin. I think Linda had spoke to... Madam Clerk, do you mind... What did Mr. Martin's office tell you about?
Just the numbers. They'll have the numbers. They won't have them until right before the June meeting, they said. That's all he said.
This ordinance is necessary in order to move forward with the bond refinance, and that...
I gave you all a copy of the timetable.
And we had delayed this, correct? By one month.
Didn't we?
Yeah. Why was it delayed? I'd have to pull the minutes to speak to it.
They were missing numbers or something?
Yeah, Mr. Martin said it was way earlier. Yeah, it was way earlier.
Oh, wait, that's the millage.
No, Mr. Martin had said there was something that caused a delay, that he needed to delay it.
Okay, I'll ask him what the delay was all about, yeah.
But what we're expecting is the day before the next city council meeting, he will have those numbers to plug in at the last minute for the council. So, I just wanted to forewarn everyone that it's going to be coming late.
So, this had to do with waiting on assessor office information?
No, that's the millage. This is for the bond, refinancing the bond, yeah.
This is refinancing the bond.
So, they were waiting on other numbers?
Yes, they were waiting on...
I'd have to pull the minutes to read exactly what... I don't recall the exact language used.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Hewitt tomorrow. I'll give him a call and ask him what the holdup was.
In fact, we have the minutes in our packet. We probably could look at it right now.
Could comb through the 12 pages.
Old business? There's no old business. New business? I don't believe there's any new business either. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
We are now back to address the council. Anyone who would wish to speak to address the council, please come up, state your name and your address, please. And remember, you have...
Three minutes?
How could I forget?
I know, huh? Or more? Oh, I don't know.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. I want to thank the Harahan Police Department for their prompt response. When we asked for an officer to come to the levee Saturday afternoon to observe the unloading, the barge unloading of limestone, which we understood to be an unpermitted activity in Harahan, and the police officer did come and make an observation of that and did make a report, we did not allege that there was dumping going on into the Mississippi River. I think there may be some confusion is what is authorized due to ordinance 1720, which was passed to make a temporary change to the Batchor District provisions to allow the temporary stockpiling of limestone during pump to the river. This was done to eliminate... Because it was thought that the pump to the river project would eliminate access between the facilities on both sides. Well, there is no... Currently, there's no problem in access. Dump trucks go from one side to the other from the two ramps. So, I think council may want to go ahead and, for purposes of the Batchor ordinance, make a resolution or take other actions to declare that the pump to the river project is closed, is finished for purposes of this, and therefore, this temporary change to our zoning ordinance is no longer necessary and should no longer be in effect. Because that would clear up their confusion, apparently, as to what they are allowed to do with limestone in Harahan. They're only allowed to stockpile it, but they're somehow under the mistaken belief that they can unload it from barges, which is not the case.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
John Ream, 3 Rentpass. I'm going to bring this back up again. The unloading of the limestone was done within the City of Harahan, right down here. It was documented by the Harahan Police Department, and it was virtually like an in-your-face thing that they violated the 1333. You know, what more do we need to say? That we need to enforce this some kind of way? We need this obnoxious and offensive dust that's coming over. We've addressed the DEQ. It seems like, you know, they do things, but it takes a while for them to do it, you know? We need to get on the ball and see what we can do to protect the citizens of Harahan. I think that's why y'all were all elected, and I think we need your help. So, something needs to be done, so brainstorm or whatever and figure something out because we need help. So, appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Ream.
Evelyn Ream, 3 Rentpass. I would like to say that I am very frustrated, very frustrated, and this ordinance that you had, we had a long time to think about it. And Wood was here, the last meeting, was fighting against it. Sorry, not fighting against it, but didn't want it to happen. I'm disappointed to the fact that we saw it on the agenda, so we thought that perhaps it was going to be voted on. I don't understand how we had no clue that it would be taken off because it seemed that the company that was here left the room even before it was said it wasn't going to be on there. So, I would like to know who informed Wood Materials that at that action that we witnessed was going to be taken, because we were not informed of that. And I guarantee you, if they didn't know that, they would have sat there the entire time and waited for that verdict to be said. I am very disappointed with that. This is definitely not right. Citizens are going through terrible ordeals. If any one of you lived on the River Oat, any one of you, police, fire department, you, any one of you lived on around that levee, this would not be going on. This is unfair that we have an ordinance to help us, that we do so much homework to do something, and they will stand up here and state they're going to do things, and they don't do it. Do you understand what I'm saying? When they said to the DEQ they would close this, they closed it. When they got their letter of NOD released, guess what they did? They opened it. They're saying things that they're going to do, and they're not doing them. We are not harassing anyone. We are hardworking citizens that care about our community, and we need our council and our mayor and all the residents and the police department and everybody to care enough to help us. I appreciate the help that we're getting from council members. I appreciate the mayor on the DEQ, but we need more than that. We need more. Now, because the Regulatory Board states they don't know nothing, I don't know why they weren't informed. We came the month before that meeting. We came and we sat here, three people, waited for them to decide to say the Pledge of Allegiance. We sat here, got up with our book. They looked at all our pictures. We told them the story. We talked for a very long time. They were fully aware of the situation. For them to delay this, I don't understand. I don't understand. And we're really having a problem with this. This means for two more months... Subin, thank you for your ordinance. Thank you for your ordinance. We realize now how good it is. Wood was here to fight it. We know now it is good.
Can I have a... Would anyone like to give a motion to extend time? I have a motion by Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, I appreciate it. This is enough to make us really...
Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
I have four yays, one absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We are tired. Mr. Bernie, I'm sorry that you have saw all of that. We did a test. We have a test, and there are things in that test that are dangerous. We can't do much more. We have been working on this 10 months, but when they get a P and say we're harassing them, that is not true. We do not harass anybody. We stand on the levee, and we quietly take pictures. That is not harassing. They state that they're going to maybe blacktop the road. I don't think we can deal with this much more. It's hurting the residents, and it's hurting the community, and I think it's simply the fact that it is obnoxious and offensive, and it's all over our homes, and I appreciate it if all of y'all would come walk with us into the homes and see that the residents have to pressure wash their homes. Children outside playing, and it's... It has to stop. It has to. The only thing we're asking is close all the openings. Go to the back like you do from Bailey to Raven. Close the openings. We can't have openings. And do something about on the pit for the trucks. It's not much to ask. It really isn't. Now, since we've been addressing it, DEQ is being very helpful. They are addressing it with us. Bidder's Office is addressing it with us. We need the sand to be monitored. If you go down Airline Highway, there's a company called La Bar Concrete, La Farge Concrete. You would never know the company was right there. And the reason you never know the company's right there is because they water their stockpiles. The DEQ states they need to be watering their stockpile. They don't do that. So, when the wind blows, openings are there, it comes into the community. For two more months, we will have dump trucks running 20 hours a day, and also, we will be... Just have the continuous sand. They get up here and they say one thing, but they don't do it. I've got proof right here. They don't do it. But they're going to accuse us of harassing them. We're not the only people who have addressed this. 15 years ago, we have a resident over here. Thank you for coming, Ms. Joanne. There's... We are the fourth one. You might be familiar with a couple. I don't remember what their names are. In 2013, they addressed it, a couple, but they moved. So, it has to get done. We can't just sit here for two more months and have our health like this because the Regulatory Board just said we're going to wait two more months. That is very unfair. Where did they get the right to do that to us? So, all I can say... I'll quit talking, but all I can say is, this is wrong. There's no way that our council and mayor cannot come up with something to make this company do its right and not have this obnoxious and offensive dust, light, noise, vibrations, sand. Thank you. I appreciate you giving me an extension.
Thank you.
It's not supposed to be like it. There you go. That's good communication.
Kay Mitchell, 41 Oak. My question is, is what is the urgency from you guys? Because it's urgent with us that we get this handled. It's so... I mean, I have sand coming out the vents in my air conditioner, y'all. It's so uncomfortable, and I didn't live here during summer last year. We moved in October 1st, and I thought it was just weird that, you know, we had a blighted house next to us, and I'm thinking, okay, all this stuff is coming from this house. It's not. These gigantic flies are not coming from the house. The sand's not coming from the house. It is going to be a rough summer. Please don't make us wait another two months. It's going to be a long summer, a long sandy summer. Hey, look, put a beach out there for us. We can maybe funnel the sand and have a beach. That would be great, but this is not a beach. This is where we live. This is where we live.
We will now close, address the council. Secretary's report. Secretary's report for April. Revenues, $373,377.48. Thank you. Reports. Chief Walker?
Do you mind just taking the mic when you stand up? Thank you, Councilman Wheeler.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers viewing public. It's the...
That's what happens when we wax the floors. Things got moved.
There you go. It's the monthly report for April 2016. We had 694 calls for service. We had 14 accidents that were reported. We issued 124 citations for 228 charges. There were seven patrol requests. We had 140 arrests. There was 258 charges, 75 were traffic, 17 felony, 136 misdemeanor, and 30 city crimes. We had two attempted burglaries, one motor vehicle theft, six varsity thefts, and 15 assaults. Also, during... From May 23 through June 5, Harahan Police Department was participating with the nationwide with the Louisiana Highway Safety Commission, click at a ticket. That's involving you wearing your seat belts. It's a very successful program. It saved a lot of lives, and we ask y'all to participate. Another note, we keep asking y'all to lock your cars. Monday a week ago, I had a knock at my house, three police officers. Individual was going through a neighborhood, breaking into cars that weren't locked, and actually, I got caught trying to break into my city car. His three accomplices were also arrested.
Was that by your home?
Pardon?
Where was that?
In my driveway. In my driveway.
They didn't know who they were dealing with?
Apparently, they didn't, but they got caught. It was very good work on our department. Car had come out on Oak Street. One officer went over to Oak, another one started playing the area, and just what happened when he passed my house, this gentleman was at my car door with a sock on his hand, trying to open the door. And right after that, his accomplices passed. They want to stop in them, recovered a weapon that was taken out of another car just a few blocks away. So, I can't plead enough. Please lock your vehicles, and if you see anything suspicious, don't hesitate to either call the department or call 911. Also, school will be out in another week. Please drive safely, and please follow us on our Facebook page. Thank you.
Chief St. Seer?
I bet you Chief Walker was glad he locked his doors that day. That would have been awfully embarrassing.
You know, that should be reported to the national news, you know, under, you know, dumb crooks, right? Yeah, dumb criminals.
Okay. Report for the fire department... Excuse me. Todd St. Seer, Fire Chief for the City of Harahan. Report for calls of service for April 2016. We had three medical assistance calls, three structural fires, three auto accidents with injury, four automatic fire alarms, two calls for downed power lines, one trash fire, and one investigation for 17 total calls. Ms. Evelyn, I'll just... I wanted to state this publicly. If you would give me a copy of that report, I wouldn't mind looking at it from a hazardous material response perspective, you know, because a lot of the things that you mentioned, although sound awfully scary, depending on the levels that they are, aren't harmful at all. So, I mean, it's things that we find...
Thank you so much.
Everyday life and, you know, the air and water that we drink, and although, you know, so it may not be as bad as you may think. I know you have the DEQ helping you as well, but I'd like to know just from... Well, no, I get that. I get that. I mean, that, you know, and at any level, and for, you know, time exposed.
And I think it's a good idea that we submitted officially into our records.
Since there is... Since there is a report out there or a test that was taken, I'd love to review that, and at least, you know, from our perspective, know what we're dealing with. We do still have fire alarms available, so if you call the station at 737-9957, we'd be happy to get out and install one or two or three at your home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hewitt, any report?
No report.
Councilman Wheeler?
Just a couple of things. Today's my husband's birthday, so I just want to wish him a happy birthday. And my parents just recently celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary. So...
That's wonderful.
It was last month, and I totally forgot, so Mom and Dad, sorry. I'm mentioning it this month.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson?
No report.
Councilman Benton?
I just wanted to say this to Ms. Reams. I think I was at that meeting, and Mr. Bures, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it was said at that meeting that by their delaying it by two months, we wouldn't be able to vote on it. I think it was said. Do you remember?
I don't remember that.
You don't? Maybe I just thought it in my head, because that's what I was thinking. I was frustrated about it because I knew that.
Mr. Bures, before you answer that, Ms. Reams, I meant to say this too. When I originally got the agenda, I emailed all the council members, including the mayor and Mr. Bures, because that was my understanding. I had spoken to members from Planning and Zoning after the meeting, and they had mentioned to us about them deferring, and I believe is for 60 days. So, that's why I initially brought up the concern to the mayor and the attorney and the other council members, because that was the impression that I was under. The impression was we had to wait for their recommendation before we can move forward. So, that was... I just wanted to let you know.
Well, we can't speak from the seated, and we can talk after, if you don't mind.
I just wanted to clarify that with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I just... We're just gonna continue Ms. Benton's report, please. Thank you. That's okay. So the other thing, I don't feel like we should have to wait. They're an advisory board. They have no...
Agreed.
We never listen to them anyway.
Those were the...
So I really don't know why we waited, but I felt like that was what we were supposed to do. Because if we didn't defer it and it got dry, I don't know, withdrawn or whatever, then we would have to re-advertise and start all over. So that's why I just went ahead and deferred it. But I really believe we should just vote on it, and we could vote on it at the next meeting, except... We can all...
Well, Councilwoman Wheeler, you brought that up to ask what we should do, right?
I did. Yes, ma'am. I sent an email to everyone, because that was my concerns when I saw it on the agenda. It was my understanding, and that's what I was asking for clarification on, was that I had understood that planning and zoning had deferred it for 60 days. So the question was, are we allowed to discuss it? Or... That was the clarification I was waiting for.
Because we were all eager to move it forward and approve it, not knowing why they delayed it two months.
I was just wanting to get clarification on the proper call.
Well, let me bring you back to what happened on this. The ordinance was introduced by Councilman Benton, and I believe it was you, Councilman Hewitt, that said, well, doesn't this have to go to planning and zoning? So the next meeting, and I forget whether it was a special meeting or a regular meeting, but I was told, well, this has been sent over to planning and zoning. I went, well, who did that? How did that happen? In any case, it wound up in front of planning and zoning, and they decided to defer it for 60 days because, you know, they were sort of, to use the expression, cold-cocked with this. They didn't... They had no idea what was going on, and they're, you know, they're presented with this thing that you guys have heard. But my initial opinion, and I think it was to you, Councilman Johnson, was that the case law is to the effect that the council always keeps control of the zoning law. The Planning and Zoning Advisory Board is simply that. It's advisory. You guys are the ones who make the decisions on planning and zoning. So if you want to move forward with that ordinance, I don't think you have to wait on what planning and zoning does with the thing. That said, tonight we've got another ordinance that deals specifically with particulate matter. We've also heard that there's a report with some objective evidence of what's going on out there. We've got all these reports from citizens about the amount of sand that's being dropped. We've got one gentleman who's speaking about, he lives, he's got his business in Jefferson, and he can't even, you know, I was shocked to see his photographs. The question is whether this is a nuisance now that has become so great that it's worthy of action in a court of law. The case law that I've been looking at just recently indicates that a lot of these cases on abatement of a nuisance are brought by the individuals who are suffering from the nuisance. And, you know, it's easy to look at a zoning ordinance when it's clear, and it says you can only run this kind of business in a certain locality. And then some other business pops up, like a ballroom or a strip club, and the next-door neighbor says, I want this nuisance abated. The zoning law clearly doesn't permit this kind of use. Well, then it's easy for a judge. This isn't quite that way. This ordinance is a little bit more touchy-feely. It says this is a permitted use to operate the sand pit. But here's something I just ran into doing some research. It's a case out of the Louisiana Supreme Court in 2008. It is a general principle of law that owners may use their property as they please, with the exception that they do not do no injury to others, under the theory, and there's some Latin here that I won't go into. Then the court drops a footnote. The Borgan Mouth Court further found that it is the universally accepted rule of law that the owner of property has a right to conduct thereon any lawful business, not per se a nuisance, as long as the business is so conducted that it will not unreasonably inconvenience a neighbor in the reasonable enjoyment of his property. But every business, however lawful, must be conducted with due regard to the rights of others, and no one has a right to erect and maintain a nuisance to the injury of his neighbor, even in the pursuit of a lawful trade, or to conduct a business on his own land in such a way as will be injurious or offensive to those residing in the vicinity. The question I have as a lawyer is whether the individual citizens are the ones who are the proper party plaintiffs, because they're the ones who are actually being injured.
Who brought that suit? Who brought that complaint?
That was... The case is called Yocum... Peterson M. Yocum and Polly Elizabeth Anderson versus 615 Bourbon Street LLC, The Rock Old Opera House, Inc., and The Old Opera House and Willie Mintz. And this case is a 2008 case that went, made it to the Supreme Court of the state of Louisiana. So you see, in this case, it's the individuals who are suing over the nuisance. They're the folks who are saying, I'm the one being injured, you know, because I, you know, got to vacuum up my house, I gotta change my air filters, I can't keep my car clean, my house is always a mess. The question I've had as a lawyer since I started hearing about this is where the city's interest is in this. You know, we clearly know that the compost operation out there is simply not permitted by our zoning law. I mean, that's just as clear as can be. Composting is defined in the zoning ordinance. They're running a compost operation out there. It's not a permitted use in the NU District. The sand is a little bit different. That, you know, if they're dirtying the streets, that's something that, you know, is offending...
Which they are.
The city of Harahan.
But now it's affecting Jefferson Parish.
If they're violating traffic laws, if they're not covering those loads, if we have an ordinance that says you have to cover the load, then they're violating a law of the city of Harahan. So this is sort of a mixed question as to who actually brings the suit and what the suit's gonna be about. Many years ago, and I shared this with you when I got the Corps of Engineers documents, the mayor of the city, and I believe it was Mayor Farrar, there was an agreement that wood materials would do certain things. Cover the trucks, not drop stuff on the road, make sure that the trucks didn't have sand on them. Sand piles wouldn't be, you know, higher than the levee. But that was just a letter agreement from the mayor saying, yeah, we'll sign off on this. This was never reduced to the law. It was never reduced to something in the city code. So that's been my concern all along, that we needed specific provisions to go after them on this. I think I've told the residents this already. If you're suffering a nuisance, perhaps the way to go is to hire a lawyer and go after the neighbor who's causing you a problem. I mean, we've got examples of this right now that are pending in the courts, where one neighbor builds a house higher than the next-door neighbor, and there's water runoff, and then the neighbors sue each other and bring the city into it.
It's just unfortunate that we have to put it on the citizens that are taxpayers when 1333, and you and I talked about this in January when you first came on as our city attorney, and it says nuisance. And you said it's difficult to define that, Dana. I think now, I mean, it almost seems as though we have enough of a case to prove the nuisance.
And, you know, because the intensity of the use has gotten so much greater out there with the airport project, it probably has now risen to that level, so...
So being that we deferred until the August meeting, and say we, with this information we're getting, that we really don't have to wait for the board, how do we go about where we can change it? Being that the meeting's not over yet, can we go back and change it?
Correct.
To where it's not August?
I really shouldn't be discussing prospective litigation in a public meeting like this, because it's really an executive session matter.
I thought I turned off my phone, my daughter.
But it is... What I'm thinking of now is not so much the ordinance as a civil action.
But can we bring the ordinance back up and vote on it?
Sure.
Because it's still during the meeting, so we can...
We could take it to August to defer it.
Sure. Just take it out of order and move to amend the agenda and take it out of order.
So we do not need to wait for the recommendation for planning and zoning?
I've never thought you needed to.
I just want to...
I don't know how it wound up over there, to tell you the truth.
I was gonna...
We asked you.
We talked about it. But it was kind of back and forth. We couldn't make a determination.
Mr. Bures, so then when it came up, then why would we advise to defer it if you're saying we didn't need planning and zoning's recommendation? We could have voted on it right then and there.
We've heard so much now from the Address the Council issue.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, tonight, I think we've all learned some stuff that we didn't know before, especially about the intensity of the use. And I'm very happy that this particulate matter ordinance made it here, because we do need specific, you know, objective measures, like I've told you all along, to go out there and say, you know, you're now in violation of an objective measure. You know, we've deferred to DEQ because they're supposed to be the experts on this, but I haven't seen anything concrete come out of DEQ's involvement.
Well, let's vote on it.
I just want to say one more thing. And I thought we wanted to defer it because you had brought it up that it needed to go before planning and zoning.
I didn't say it needed to. I asked the city attorney if it needed to.
Yeah, and I gotta tell you, I don't know how it made it over there, because I never saw anything come out of the council that said we're sending it over. It was just like, one of these meetings, well, how did this get to planning and zoning? I think I sent an email around about that, but it's there now.
Yeah, it was actually in an email stating it had to go. Maybe something got confused along the way, but yeah.
I'm pretty jealous of the council's right to do it.
Hey, it doesn't matter. We're fixing it. Let's vote on it.
Doesn't matter. Can I have a recess for a second, please, Mr. Bures? May I speak with you, please?
Sure.
Okay.
The city council meeting is back from recess. Councilman Bures, can you get...
City Attorney.
City Attorney. No.
Wow.
I'm done. I am just... I'm ready to go see my son, I think. I'm so sorry.
Not obviously. He could have gone.
I know. What is with that? City Attorney Bures, I'd like your recommendation about maybe potentially going into calling for executive session to discuss the ordinance that was deferred, considering that it...
I would suggest that you go into executive session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation.
Thank you. Do... Councilman Wheeler, do I have a motion to go into executive session? I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by...
Second.
Councilman Johnson, all in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes. We're going into executive session. Thank you.
I've got Todd.
The regular city council meeting is back from recess, and Ms. Benton? Okay. I move to reconsider the motion to defer ordinance 2016-3 to the August council meeting. I have a motion by Councilman Benton. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Johnson, all in favor?